There, I think there's 17s. Two fifty-five. Big guess right now.
Yeah. Actually. We just got the tires for Mary's car, still tires, so.
I just put a set of the. Two tires on Lisa's car.
Three sets of tires in nine months. Just, just bad timing.
If I sent for the front.
You said?
Spring, we gotta buy rims and spring tires.
Uh huh.
And that's gonna happen.
Tires have gotten ridiculously expensive.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Can you make a part of this? This is a, I did up a little skill thing of. Of the amendments proposing for. Set three.
You want, just, just the talk or?
Well, oh, yeah.
How many times?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yeah. Hello. That's fine.
I'm gonna be all that.
Hey, hello. Um. I'm wishing I had my sound.
Gee, where have I heard that?
Really?
I almost missed the driveway gate.
This one?
The DPW drive, yeah.
At least you weren't coming down like the big, big hill from the top. I just slid the whole way down the hill. I was like, ooh.
That's no fun.
That's not, this hill is not usually that great, but mine hill is by far the way they were. And I'm watching the neighbor's dog because DHMC has thrown people for sixteen hours since.
Did you bring it?
In my vehicle. My husband's on it. I had to rethink his iPad to my reminders that.
You said.
Yeah.
No, I've just got the minutes.
Oh.
And this stuff, this stuff that was in yesterday's email.
And I will be at copies.
Yeah, I was hoping, yeah, I was. I think he, that's what he's doing right there.
Well, he's putting some stuff that I get for. Shit's three, but I don't know if he, that point is, the other proposals.
In the winter, it doesn't like big fingers. I D. It's a good thing that's not the finger that got you guys about.
I'll see if I can get.
Sure. Minutes? Sent to us before?
I was told they were, but I don't remember seeing.
I don't remember reading this. I'm reading some other minute.
I didn't get it.
No, I didn't think we did.
Okay, okay, okay.
I. I, you know, I know, but I don't remember getting it.
Yeah, I'm reading this, this is like.
And it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like we, I remember reading these.
No.
It looks like he accidentally sent it to the master plan. Oh.
He said.
Bridget asked me about that.
Ah.
That's. Bridget was like, did you get them? I was like, no. I was like, I got them, but I.
Yeah, he sent them to the task force.
Okay, he's gonna. Ready to live. Either, yeah.
I'm sure he just snapped, he probably wrote planning and.
Right, yeah, that's okay.
On a field, yeah. Right, I'm gonna come up with another term that. Yeah, like, I work to just send all it, it's like, oh, forget this apartment, just a, it's email.
Right.
Do you mean like the list or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, please reply directly to me if you want this.
Boom.
No, no, that was not the intention.
Yeah.
I said this. A response? Okay. Okay. Yes, does that number include paper copies?
Oh, that's right, no, it doesn't, so we can add those. He's gonna put them on.
Obviously, really big.
That's good. We probably have it.
Yeah. You know, we've never, nobody got.
He came, he kicked in. He sent us to the wrong group.
I thought he reset when he showed up.
I did reset, maybe though.
Yes.
Right after I sent it to the wrong group.
You didn't get it? No.
I didn't get it.
None of us got it.
I'm not.
No, none of us got it.
Oh. Yeah, I went through my group twice.
That's the agenda.
It's something yesterday.
I am Tuesday ten forty. Yesterday, I got these two things.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
That's it, that's all we got, that's all I got was zoning amendments and the village thing.
So that's what I sent yesterday, but last week.
No.
No.
And then to the agenda?
No.
And a reminder?
No.
No, I have it, but it's more, it's the trend list as an master plan.
Right.
Eleven copies of both.
Yeah.
Let's skip, you go, right?
The minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
I need a minute.
Did I give you this?
This is minutes?
No.
I just wanna hit forward and I'll pick it up on my laptop.
Why don't we get started?
Yeah.
Are you recording?
You know, I'm blind. I can't read any.
Rob?
Yes.
Is the recording going?
Yes.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. It is December eighth. And this is the town of Enfield Planning Board. We are meeting in the DPW conference room. And the meeting is also available on Zoom, although nobody is, has joined as of yet. We'll do roll call attendance from my left, starting with Linda.
Linda Chums. Kate Conway Stewart.
Dan Kylie, David Frack.
Kyle Potter. Good luck.
And our staff.
Lynn Taylor.
Whitney Banker.
Okay, Jim, we are missing a couple of members. Eric notified me that he would be attending the fifth grade concert tonight at the elementary school. So I assume he has a fifth grader. If that's much more important than Tony, so.
Good chance he does.
Good choice.
Yeah.
So Jim, you'll be a voting member tonight. And Rob, have you heard from Phil? Because we haven't seen him for a long time.
He had sent me a note, said he's gonna do something with the church.
Okay.
Event.
Oh, it's, yeah.
It's like their broadcasting event, something like that.
Already.
Usually Wednesdays, but I, for some reason.
I don't see anybody from the public, so there's no way to do public comment. Kate, anything from the select board that you care to share with us?
Sure, select word that Monday evening and not a whole lot on the agenda. Got an update on some donations and there is a public hearing posted on a donation that will go towards the match for Lakeside Park. We have quite a few hometown holiday events going on. Town Christmas tree lighting was last Friday. And then we have a gingerbread contest kicking off and all sorts of fun stuff. You can see the full list at enfieldmainstreet.org. So it's the Village Association that's kind of collaborating with Parks and Recreation and I happen to be the PBLA days on. So that's pretty fun Friday night, if anyone wants to really have some fun, there's an ugly sweater. Community social, I lost lettuce outside, it's a tailgate. You can bring either your own food or takeout and there's a number of businesses in town. The discounts, if you mention the ugly sweater event and wear your ugly sweater, pick up one. So if you wanted to have a little community spirit, that's fun. And there's a, the folks at Lakeside Park are having a gathering as well. And I can even begin to remember all, so lots of fun stuff going on, making some progress. Hopefully we got an update on RFQ for invasive species. We got four. Different focuses, so that's actually much better than what we'd expected. So jackets, I'm processing that, reading through those and trying to make a determination that this will be a long-term project that would have to go into the budget. But. To start with town properties and also include some education for personal property owners about how to control invasive species. The thing that's probably the most prominent that sticks out to a lot of people in this town would be the Japanese knotweed, which is, we call bamboo, in colloquial terms. So there's that and I think really not a whole type of lot else other than. I think we'll be hopefully looking in the near future at talking about whether we're going to have a town manager. So hope to that, hopefully that will be an update for you guys next time.
Okay, Rob, are there some people that wanna come in? I heard a couple of chimes while you were.
You did, yeah.
Nobody.
Nobody.
We.
It's just being.
And I didn't figure out what happened. So the same thing that happened to me. Yesterday, happened to me last week.
You did it twice.
But the master planning people didn't say, hey, last week, they did yesterday. So somehow, when I take the word planning, instead of populated planning board.
Exactly.
Master planning task force, why doesn't it give you plan? I didn't put master planning, I put planning.
Yeah, if you do that and hit tab, sometimes Microsoft decides it's gonna play.
Yeah, it makes a decision more careful from now on, sorry about that. I pray, everybody should have paper copies.
Love it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Kate. Next are minutes from November ten. I know a lot of people just got them. And. You wanna take a few moments to read over them, I think that would be an appropriate thing to do. I had seen these. I'm on master plan task force.
You got, three of you got.
Gee, thanks David.
Yeah. Stuff comes in and I just save the documents and leave it. Here we go, somebody's.
She's in, she's in Cali, I don't think she'll.
I'm sure. It's no part of.
Made me nervous not to see any tire tracks turning onto Long Haven Road or coming up here. Oh my gosh, I shoveled in my dinner and jumped in the car and I thought, gosh, lovely mail made me cancel. Like I mentioned, I've been a lot of time, this is not.
Did you get the email I just forwarded you?
Yeah, I just got it for something out of it. It was plugged in, but that doesn't mean that the whole device was plugged in, it might mean that it was plugged in here and not there.
Okay.
Happens in my household.
You don't have to receive that.
No, I never carry it. It's a laptop.
Guessing it's Dr. Phil, but could be Sharon as well, so. Maybe they'll say, ah.
Don't preserve my battery.
For a very sick.
Yes. Oh, well, I eventually might put out for now, I'll just save it out, it actually lasts even at ten percent. But I feel like I'm gonna die.
All right, is everybody finished reading the minutes? Anybody need more time?
No.
Okay. In that case, okay. We can wait for you to finish up then, Linda.
You can call this?
We did.
He's like, yeah, I looked through it.
We did.
I like, Scott was your last.
Complete minutes.
We combined both meetings for November into that first meeting.
That's right.
So we did a lot.
Yeah, it's a two hour.
While we're waiting for Linda to show up, we should acknowledge that we have two visitors via Zoom. We have Cecilia, who I assume is Ceeley O'Fiero. And we have Sharon Bofay, who might be Sharon or might be David. So if both of you could either show us your video so we can see who you are.
Hello.
Sharon, hi. And Cecilia. Well, you still have Cecilia. Okay, let's get to the minutes of November ten. Does anyone have any comments, changes, directions?
That's fine.
Thanks. Would somebody care to make a motion to accept them as presented? Why make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented, they had tired. Who is seconding?
I'll second that motion, Kate Conway Stewart.
All right, all in favor, raise your hands. Posed, done, and no extension, so unanimously the minutes are accepted. We have no hearings, we have no conceptuals. I think the main focus of our work tonight is going to be proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. And Rob has them on the big screen.
Let me assure my screen though.
Okay.
And if this is the people. Is that taking up, if you guys want to?
I can read that.
That's good, that's good. So, this is. Basically, started with the document that Kurt had built and we'd gone over it, I think, at least two, two times.
At least two times, yeah.
Yeah. And.
Stupid drafts.
That I, I used the. Basically, the video and Wiki's minutes from the last meeting to make the updates.
Yeah.
Basically, a couple of things that I dropped out of here, just, they won't be in this document, but just so you're aware. I dropped the. CB first floor requirement between.
Right.
I think it's between Blacksmith and.
We agreed at the last minute.
Yeah.
With the minutes, remember that.
Interestingly, just FYI, I did hear from a builder today who was planning a project down there. And when he heard that you guys had dropped it here. Hey. And that's Jim Keller, the guy that bought the piece of land across from Georgia's, Little Tiny Stream. That's been, the building's been removed and the trees have been cut. He has, Chris Ross has presented a conceptual, could probably come in, talk to you guys at some point, I think he already has once.
Yeah.
You know, it's been, it's been a couple of years, he's been sort of battling with New Hampshire DOT. And so he doesn't have as much land as he thought he did. So the original plan, which was gonna have first floor garages, which would have sort of kind of surround the first floor requirement thing for residential. Those are out, he doesn't have enough for, for garages. And he was still hoping to do it if the state would give him what they call a continuous curb cut, which is basically a really long curb cut. Which other places have, including Georgia's.
Yeah.
State would not let him do that. So he's mixed the. The garages underneath and so that, what he's proposing now, or at least conceptually, he's thinking about doing. Is three units on the first floor and three on the second floor, so they, they would all be one bedroom. Quite nice apartments, according to his designs. No, there's, there's enough rooms for eight parking spaces, which is gonna be your requirements. And he'll need setback variances.
Right.
And obviously it'll need a special exception if you guys continue to do what I think you're gonna do is keep that. First floor thing out of this year's amendments. So just wanted to let you know that, and I did, because years ago. Somebody wants to try to come in, let's see, that. Two years ago, we did update all of the. Actions where it referred to the zoning administrator to be the land use administrator, which is, which is my title. I nixed any ones that referred to the title, because those are all current, so. So we can start in right here, as you see, this is basically from the notes from the last meeting, so. If you remember, we, we talked about the with thing, Kurt, I don't know if you wanna lead this, the. Changing it to the, instead of public right of way, street giving access to the lot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's. We've been pretty much agreeing to that language all along and that's what I always described in the RSAs. So that was the best language to use.
R three, R five. That's it for that, for that, right?
All right, so I, I have a question on this, when we present it to the public on the ballot. Are we going to do it as one article? Having to do with several zoning districts, or are we gonna have people vote on? An article, a voting article?
So this would be, all three of these would probably be in one article.
Okay.
As sort of a theme for that.
Yeah, I agree. Groups, group by language or. Type of change.
I agree.
Okay, that way, you don't, you don't lose everything because somebody didn't like one part of it.
Right.
Yeah. Perhaps this, this land use definition, maybe, that was in the back group?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would. Yeah, I mean, it's related to street access.
Yeah.
So. Pre-frontage access, so I would probably keep that as one article.
And this one probably goes with it.
Yeah, 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 this is all street related.
Yeah. Keep going.
Yeah.
Probably all the way down.
And then that would be.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Right here. Well, actually, that, that one is just for us to do on our own.
Yeah, that was a, we determined what to be a formatting.
Yeah, it's a formatting, yeah. You know, I'm changing any of the words, just making two paragraphs.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to, like, you know, with high water? High water should probably be hyphenated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have, I go.
So we're fixing.
Right. The same wording is in all the other districts, it's just for whatever reason, this paragraph, I've written this way.
Yeah. And it was. Myself, we'll just highlight this as a. As its own sort of. Bottom word. Okay. Let's go down to this one. Commercial, industrial district, these restrictions. We're striking the whole section?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be its own.
Well, I don't, do you wanna, because it's being a complete strikeout, do you wanna add it with the village plan? Or not?
Oh, strike these items, so it's the one. I mean, I.
Yeah.
I think it's just as likely to pass either way with a little bit of education.
Right.
And it would make it a ballot shorter.
And so one of the things that I will do. Is I will write a little narrative that goes with each of the articles.
Like this has never been used.
Yeah, never been used, I just, it's sort of a housekeeping, let's get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We already have cluster development.
Right.
Which is basically the same.
Right.
Yep, right.
I would say it's largely.
Right, and that one above H is also green space and open area, which is part of a cluster development concept, so. Even though it's meant for commercial.
Okay, so that's a two fur.
Yeah. And we're getting.
We just size.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Fun, that's the big one.
Yeah. I'm gonna strike the section D at four oh eight. We're replacing with the sign illumination.
Yeah.
That. If you remember, I remember we talked about, I'm trying to remember what I changed for you guys based on.
Can you add a.
You slow down.
Rotating. Flashing rotating comma and.
Oh, yes.
The Oxford, because the Oxford comma is back.
You're in that, I don't.
It goes in and out, but it's back right now.
Okay. I changed displayed message, as David had indicated down here. You remember that? I think it was just displayed message originally, when we.
Yes. I think it might have been just what they added, the, the one I copied from, that's how they spelled it, so.
Yeah, they were probably using display like computer display instead of, but displayed covers everything.
Yeah.
Okay. Does everybody like?
Yeah. On externally illuminated signs. Cut off all upward transmission is good. Do we need to add something about light trespass off of the property besides?
How fair now.
Yeah, that is. We do have it elsewhere, but should we put it here as well?
Yes, where is it elsewhere? Is it in the site, the site plan review?
It's in site plan, yeah.
Site plan review.
Or do you reference site plan review and just, so you're not re-stating?
Maybe that's a better way to do it.
I'm just thinking, no, you don't have to restate, you can. No, I don't know how, how you would wanna say it, but that way, if you ever have to change it in the other one. It references over instead of trying to remember to change it in both places.
How about just adding and shall comply with all lighting requirements under site plan review? And reference the section there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep going under it, and shall comply with.
And shall comply with all requirements of section whatever of site plan review.
I didn't say the section whatever, it's definitely. I was gonna say, the section whatever is definitely gonna be the one that needs to happen.
I'll put a little bit for myself. I put the whatever right in there.
Dan, you're not in the Christmas spirit, you're being mean. You want everybody to have a hole in their stockings.
Somewhere we have a fat suit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right, it's 5.7 exterior lighting and signs, the site plan. And well, like, back, and refers back to the zoning, 5.7?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, we might have to.
Okay, let's not have any specific, yeah, they're in there. Section reference.
Lighting designs, appendix B. Appendix B, outdoor lighting design standards. Circuits.
I'll give it a look, see.
I'm good with it.
I'm good. Okay, hours of elimination. You guys happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Striking the direct white lighting reference, 408 up to D here. Sign permit procedures. Do you have comments at the last meeting about any modifications, physical design of the sign shall require a new permit, that was something I, that we worked out, site plan applications, that was something worked out and left the last meeting, or what you guys said.
A quick side trip.
Yes.
Just in reference to forms and how we do forms overall, I don't want to get into a philosophical discussion, but we don't necessarily, in the past have not numbered and dated them, with like versioning, so we haven't given that, like, your sign permit is liberty law number, that's what it was, right?
Yes.
And that's something that as we're trying to, to do electronic records, which I know you were starting on, we should probably be doing and referencing, and that way, it will reference the correct form, but then there'll be a versioning.
Yes. Yeah, Ryan and I discussed that codification.
Yes.
It was a project that we were starting on a little bit before he left, it was basically trying to get everything organized.
One of the things, it happens all the time at other departments, I see people come, like even recreation, for example, like someone will come with a market form from like 10 years ago, and you're like, how'd you get that? So. Save people a little bit of time in trouble.
I know that the zoning ordinance, the very cover page of the zoning ordinance does have all the revision dates, all the way down to the most recent one. So, but I totally agree, it should be like right in the footer, maybe, I don't know, something like that. Okay? We struck a lot of these other things, as you guys have said, it's up to me.
Exactly, it's your, your ballowick to design the form and get the information that you need.
And I still liked Kate's idea, getting together on a fillable form through Adobe.
And I think eventually, that fillable form will populate a database, so you'll be able to, you could put it, pivot it, pull things out.
That's awesome. The removal of signs, I think all the sign stuff stays in one category?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'd make it all one.
This is where you guys had, and I like this, I like the idea that the, that I can actually try to regulate quality, basically, keep it in a good state of repair.
Yeah.
Appearance, to the land and, land use administrators, Kate, did you ever talk to Jack about fines, or we're gonna talk about that?
Oh.
Yes, we could still talk about that.
Did I fire up an email to both of you, or did I not? Okay.
Let's say, right there, that, that last sentence, failure to comply with these regulations shall be subject to fines and penalties, I think that was a, that was sort of a bash up of your thoughts, maybe a little wordsmithing was in order there, but, yeah.
I wondered also, this is just me, in some cases, in town, various things, take action ourselves and can't do the bill. Yeah, a certain amount of time before, I'll, I'll use the SUIR as an example, you get a certain amount of time to get your act together and do it, to comply, and then we do it for you and say, here's your bill, so should that be, I mean, in the case of a sign, here's your bill, is we've removed a, give us 50 bucks, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because I think remove a, we're not gonna redo your sign, but we could remove your sign and charge you.
Well, a pen, a penalty would be removing it.
Right.
Yeah, no, as long as that, you feel that penalty would be removing it.
Yeah, and the fine would be to cover the costs.
Right, I think we need a noun here.
Remove, remove the, the E. Shall, shall subject the owner.
Shall subject, oh, yes. Is it not property on there? I don't know, said sign.
Yeah, we could talk about that.
The property owner.
Right.
Ultimately, they're the ones that are on the hook.
And the or should probably be and/or, because you could get fined if that.
Right.
If you're letting me pick.
Yeah, Dan is right, yeah.
If you're letting me pick, you're probably getting both.
Because based on that, you only get once.
All right, I'm gonna suggest that we start the sentence with, the property owner shall be subject to fines and/or penalties for failure to comply with these regulations.
That's even better.
Very direct, and you know who's getting that.
So, we did.
The property owner shall be subject to fines and/or penalties for failure to comply with these regulations.
The B is coming back.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't know that when we took it out.
Okay. Spike project, they're so great.
Get closer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cap T on the beginning?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Probably just to fines and/or, okay, take out the space between the slash and or.
Yeah, you don't like the space.
Don't like the space.
I don't like the space.
Not proper, not proper. Shall we say fines and/or penalties as determined by the select board, or should we just leave it at?
Because they're gonna set them.
I have a time. Okay, so there, there will be a schedule of fines and penalties available.
They have.
Okay, yeah.
I think it would get added, like with the beach parking lot.
Right, right, but if there's something that's on the form, the signage form, especially for new signs going forward, just be like, the bottom line is, you know, may take a sign or, or you pay the cost of the town's removal.
Make sure that was apped.
You know, something that affects, it's right on the form that they sign.
Okay, why are we saying obsolescence, I don't see the meaning of the language that talks about obsolete signs, and what is an obsolete sign anyhow?
Yeah, yeah, I would, something that, when the business is gone, but the sign's still there, falling apart.
Yeah.
When there's no connection between the sign and any active business, maybe that's on, it's obsolete.
Should we add a sentence to that effect?
There are some that are difficult to take down, like the gas station sign, you know, until the property, until taken sold, if it's a big expensive sign.
The other, yeah.
But it was properly made, hey?
Yeah.
So, it wasn't like, it was, you know, it wasn't an ISO, I think that's what we're looking to get rid of, it's ISOs.
Not obsolescence of the business.
Right. Right, and that sign post, and or, well, whatever you want to call the top piece, could have been repurposed.
Right, right.
Yeah, so substrate. Yeah, from a side making. Yeah.
I mean, and it doesn't say we shall take it down, it doesn't mean we should take it, right, we would determine that. So, if it had a very good reason, like you just said, that really isn't enough, so I don't.
I guess my only question is, should the shall be will?
Yeah, will.
Will, rather than shall.
In which one?
In the last one.
In the, in the fines, penalties?
In those, both, yeah. Because if you're not complying with the regulation, you're going to be fined, you will be fined or penalized.
Then it should read shall.
Yeah, if you're going to actually enforce it, it needs to say shall.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
Otherwise, it becomes up to the, whoever, the enforcer decides, well, I'm not gonna bother, and there was no recourse.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if, if, if we want this to be done, it should read shall.
Yeah.
Okay, that way, that way the select board, or, or someone can, you know, sort of like, do your job type of thing, yeah.
Go back to the property owner.
We'll put that shelter.
You, you, well, what do we want, I mean, if we want it to be definitely, it should read shall.
Yeah.
And if we want to leave it to the discretion of the ZA, then it should say may.
What's your question?
Well, if the land use administrator determines the sign is in violation, he's, I'd say shall.
Then it should be shall.
Yeah.
The question is, how, how hard ass do we want to be about this?
Well, based on if it's a disrepair or considered dangerous, I think we probably would.
I, I, I played devil's advocate.
I know what you mean, but, yeah.
I, I would like to see it as shall, myself.
Right, right, yeah, if there's, if there's no cheating to the enforcement, yeah, then you're gonna be going back and forth, and the court's gonna say, well, it doesn't say you have to do it.
Yeah. Happy with that.
So, it really, really, you know, you determine, say, you determine, someone complains about a sign, you look at it and say, it's not that bad, then it's on that person complaining to take it to the next level.
Right.
Okay, I, I have another question here, what does immediately mean?
So, what I was, my next point was. Yeah.
You know, I, I would like to say shall be.
In a timely manner?
No, that's, that's as vague as immediate, that, that's even more vague.
I think you get under a month, I mean, if you can't figure out how to take something down within a month, because if it is a large sign, then you may need a crane.
Yeah.
So, I guess someone, I, and, and if you can't, then you need to go see Rob, right?
Right, right, and you say, here's the people I contacted, none of them can do it within this time period.
So, why don't we say shall, shall be repaired or removed within, within 30 days upon order of the land use administrator?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
If 30 days seems more than reasonable to me, everybody agree?
All right, unless there's, but then they, you know, they can argue the case that it needs to be more than 30 days, but, but, needs to be progress, unlike a, why don't we pierce up, it's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, if there are extenuating circumstances, like, you know, the base of the sign is frozen into the ground.
Right, yeah.
You know, clearly, that's something that you have to wait until it calls out.
Well, he comes in with an invoice that says the crane can't be filled next month.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, yeah.
The land use.
Yeah.
Do we need a, do we need a reference in here that, whatever the land use administrator says can't be appealed to the ZBA?
No. No.
Now, that, that's.
Because it could be.
No.
That is.
But let's not say it.
I mean, that's, that is the option if they pursue, but that's for that, I think, leaving that out, that down.
And any, any of your decisions can be appealed if I'm not mistaken.
Right, correct.
Well, this just falls in with.
Right.
Everything else.
Yeah, just the.
Everywhere, exactly.
All right, let's not push that agenda.
Gonna hit save. And move on to the next one, this is it, that's the. Yeah, so, I'm gonna unshare this. It was the other, next one.
All right, for village residential, is this the latest version, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, Eric and I worked on this a little bit following the meeting, and then I took it home and looked at it and made a couple of changes, sent it back to Eric, and he agreed that they were okay, they addressed the concerns that Kurt had brought up, and also it filled in some of the blanks that were not in the previous draft, so. We're, again, we're limiting the village residential district to just the two lots that are the Shed Street lots that the town owns, and the reason we're doing this is so that when a request for proposals goes out to developers, they know what the zoning restrictions are for those two lots, so, most of what is in this is our one district stuff with a few exceptions, so scroll down a little bit if you could.
There's the curving problem, yeah, and there's a curving problem with the air and water. Sometimes it's a versioning issue between a map and a P D.
It took about 10 minutes for me to print one page, the printer just kept doing one line at a time, because it was having a hard time figuring out.
Yeah, see how the shall applies to you, too, it's having.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think it's a versioning issue between edits.
It also may have something to do with the fact that I don't use Word, although I might have convinced, so anyhow, we went to accessory dwelling units, we cite the RSA.
You might have to strip this, you might have to copy it, start new and strip it in the plain text, but I think it's, it's got enough, if you hit that paragraph button up there. The, it's the backwards P at the top, under paragraph. Yeah, up, up, on the toolbar, over to the right.
Over to the right.
The, no, no, back to the paragraph. The, no, no, back to the paragraph. Yeah, I'd say it's messed up.
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
Okay, so we, we kept the minimum lot size at an eighth of an acre.
Right.
And we, the, the, the previous, or maybe not the version that the board had seen, but where Eric had worked out, was an eighth acre for a single family, a quarter acre for duplex. Oh, okay, you've got that.
Yeah.
And I, 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 I think that what we decided, or I guess maybe it was I, that me that decided it, was that just keep it at an eighth of an acre. And when people develop their lot, however large it is, the parking regulations and the setback regulations would kind of limit what people can put on that lot. And scroll down a little bit further to where we get to. Yeah, so we say lots may have more than one principal building. And lots with a single building and five or more dwelling units need site plan approval. And lots with more than one principal building shall obtain site plan approval regardless of the total number of dwelling units.
We have some comments that before each, when it says state permits, comment as required. And then if we go down to what you guys read, that has a high quality at the last line, at the plenty board regardless.
And Rob, do you have Eric's email in, in which he said that, you know, we could decide something a little bit different in terms of the number of lots, or the number of buildings, or how site plan approval would be required?
Eric said it in the email to us?
Well, to me, I, I know I got it. Let me see if I can find it. You hang on for just a second. Or maybe longer than a second. Eric's email.
Do you normally do Wi-Fi long and not the. Oh, no, no, never mind. It is their minimum requirement. I think that's a height that isn't necessary, although you just don't see the word cheating long.
Okay.
What is the cutoff for a site plan review currently for housing units? Is it three units require a site plan or four, five?
No, it's five. It's five because.
You can have a three unit, four unit apartment and not require a site plan?
That's right.
Yep, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I haven't, I haven't seen too many apartments since I've been on the board, so.
Yeah. That's because there's very few that have that.
And I think some of the buildings that could, it's just going through the process, isn't necessarily financially a good decision to pick up any.
I mean, all the projects that had multiple unit buildings were large projects, so, right.
Yeah, going, going to five, it's just, it's necessarily economic.
Okay, so what, what Eric suggests for letter I, subletter B, is that as an alternative, we could specify the minimum number of dwelling units that would trigger a site plan. Oh, there it is.
You like cut boots in there.
Yeah.
We are getting serious in the technology.
We're having a problem.
So, you know, we, we, we can leave it this way, or we can do, you know, the other way.
I think in that, for the simple markup, I think the dropdown is a simple markup. We should be able to show off. And that way, at least you could see where it is when you roll over. Yes, look at that.
Can somebody who's close?
I inserted five or four because a primary residence can have up to four.
And I, I think that had to do with whether it's a residential mortgage or a commercial mortgage.
Right. Yeah. Exactly.
And.
Or we could specify the minimum number, I think it's supposed to be of dwelling units to trigger site plan review.
I'd like to go back when I first talked to Eric about this, envisioning a this two acres and the possibility that someone could do an apartment complex. But this has slices of bread on the loaf here.
Right, that's.
That's something that, that Kurt drew up, and I'm going to ask Kurt to fill us in on this once we finish with this discussion. And if we need to come back, then we can.
Come back.
Come, come, come back to the, to the language.
Because when I went through this paper and drew myself a little picture, I came out with either eight units per acre, up to sixteen acres per acre, and ten plus units per acre, based on the wording. But then there has to be ten feet from each building to the center line
Right.
in the slices of bread model.
Right.
So it's not possible to do a duplex using two lots, or I don't know. If, 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 none of this represented what Eric was talking about, unless he thinks it does.
None, none of which.
When I went by the words on this latest draft and drew them onto the little picture, they didn't match the complex of perhaps a larger apartment building.
I, I think it leaves the possibility for it, it, it gives you minimum requirements and it's kind of, it bounds the outer of your plan.
Yeah, the other piece of this is the select board is going to put out an RFP as to what they want on that lot. This is probably going forward, okay? Away from these two lots, when you get into the rest of the village, it's basically saying you could have a one eighth acre lot.
But I'm not seeing how you, anyone could do a nice complex there with these regulations.
Sure they can, sure they can, because they don't have to make them one eighth of an acre. That's the minimum. What they, what you could basically do is have a fourteen unit apartment building there without any problem, because you, this is the minimum for subdivision. I don't have to subdivide that much. I could subdivide it, I could have two, say, eight unit apartments, one on each of the two lots, or I could have one big fourteen, put it together. I could merge it because I own them both at that point. It's what the select board's going to get for an RFP, what's going to happen on that lot.
And conversely, if we expand this district.
Right.
If somebody has, let's say, a half acre lot within, that falls within the district. And they've got a garage or a carriage house out back, and they wanted to chop off an eighth of an acre and sell that carriage house to somebody else, they would be perfectly allowed to do it. And this is just one method of making it possible to increase the housing density within the village where there's water and sewer. Which seems to be what people want to do.
And I think the RFP isn't going to limit it to solely a vision of housing. It could be senior living, it could be an facility that has a gym and a daycare, right? It could be, I mean, I, we're not trying to push the idea that we don't want residential housing, because we absolutely do. But it could be something more than just a simple housing.
Well, how would we place it? Certainly might be residential.
Yeah, I mean, Agent Lee's housing often has different aspects that come with it, other than just even.
Oh, the one that Eric uses is, is, and splits.
Yep.
Yep. Perfect example, perfect example, it's not a large lot. It's well constructed, it has all the parking you need. It looks nice. It fits in with the neighborhood.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to get to.
Actually, this doesn't say anything about it fitting in with the neighborhood. That's something to.
Well, if it's site plan review, then we would have some say over, you know, if somebody's going to put in a four story building, well, they couldn't because it's a height restriction. You know, if, if it's site plan review, we would have some input as to what it looked like.
All A-dimensionals, unless it's in the C F U four districts.
Right.
I mean, Jakes was a classic example of what they say conceptually and what they build.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, their conceptual plans that they showed us were not what they built, not even close.
Concept, yeah, but when, when they got to the point of the actual theory.
They did.
They, they told us what they were going to build and they built that.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, conceptual doesn't.
They sold, they, but it was still a conceptual.
However, the dollar store.
Take a look at this, do you like this? And, but then when it came to actual plans, it was completely different.
I would say the dollar store is the one that really stretched the truth. They, those windows are not windows, right? So I think they pulled some wizardry there, but Jakes did not pull wizardry.
No, no, I'm just, but I'm just saying it's, we, we couldn't go back to, well, your conceptual said this, you have to build this.
Well, no.
Because our regulations didn't say. Conceptual, you cannot. Right, but our regulations didn't say you can't build what you built either.
Remember, there's going to be an RFP though, and if they make a deal with the select board, I would hope that there would be consequences for doing wizardry. Right, like, you don't want to play that game, not while I'm around, at least.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not interested in playing games with a developer who shows you one thing and does another, just so they can buy it. I think there are ways to legally restrict them and, and make some agreements on that. And I would hope that we would do that, and not just be like, oh, we solved the law.
Sure, I mean, as, as, as part of their response to the RFP, I would hope they're going to require them to, you know, give some illustrated, illustrations and verbal or written descriptions. And then, you know, you guys sign a contract. And hopefully, it's a very tight contract.
I'm a big fan of holding people to their contracts too, so.
Well, yes. As it, as it, as it does not revert to you until you've finished the project. You want to finish what we have on the screen and then.
Yeah, sure.
I kind of like Eric's point though, because the minimum number of dwelling units, it must be cited elsewhere, right?
No, there is no minimum number of dwelling units, right?
Okay.
Well, I mean, implied is a single family.
Right.
Okay, okay. And principal building meaning home. And if you had a separate garage that was not attached, that would not count.
That would not be a principal building. So in other words, like Anne's Place has several buildings, all of which are, quote, principal buildings.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, a building that fits the definition of an ADU, an accessory building, is not a principal building. A shed is not a principal building. So, you know, what this states is what they did for Anne's Place can be done here.
But I could have been.
Yeah. Everybody good with this? Save it. Yeah, let's get on to the diagrams that Kurt.
So, so I'm working up the premise that since we have not seen any RFP from the select boards, I'm working on a principle that's only what's before us right now. So regardless of what the select would say they want to go there, yeah, I'm just, I just worked up zoning amendments with the specifically for the Shed Street lots, and then I did one up for anywhere in the resident, Village Residential Districts as to be defined later. So I unfortunately didn't number two of my pages. So I guess the first one I have, you want a copy of what I said? Yeah, that way I go and look at the same pages. All right, so the top one is Shed Street lots, one acre lots, just carved up based on the physical dimensions of the lots now. It's a hundred and eighty feet deep from Shed Street, set the bottom of the page, real trail at the top of the page. The lot is a hundred and eighty feet deep and pretty close to five hundred and fifty feet from end to end for the two lots combined. Fifty foot road footage, you can come up with ten individual lots.
Yeah.
So that's, so, and they come under the square footage comes up within that range of one eighth of an acre, plus, plus a little bit extra. Either it's someone just buying the lots and carving it up to to maximize space. And each one would hold probably a module, a single, single modular home of possibly, you know, double wide would be too big, be a singular. Double wide. Why we probably fit, I ran some, looked at some websites for modular homes to get some dimensions of what they typically run. And double wide, single wide's like fourteen feet wide, sixteen feet, double wide, and with like twenty seven, thirty wide is the numbers I was seeing. Page two is quarter acre lots. Just to see what a quarter, like, quarter acre lot would look like, and you come up with six lots and one less than a quarter acre left over. But there's, also because that diagonal line is how the property line actually goes on the property itself. Yes, so page, third page, which I actually numbered, number one, is a to scale, one acre, one acre lots, or actually two of them, side by side with the setbacks as proposed drawn in. And it would leave you with a buildable area of just over two thousand square feet. It would be thirty feet by seventy feet buildable area. And which also now is modular home size. Next page. Next page. Two is a one acre, one acre of an acre lots. Someplace outside of those lots, but in what. Future village residential district would be, it did not apply the real trail. First page, because it applies the real trail as a greater setback. Uh, this one would be the ten foots all around except for the road frontage. And it would be still thirty feet wide and you would have eighty feet of buildable area.
Are you taking account into, taking the need for parking into account?
Yeah, this is, I, you know, I couldn't remember. If it's just a parking, if you just park your car, there's no structure. So you can put it in your setback hearings.
Yeah, you could.
Right, even if you paved it, I believe you can still go with setback hearings.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. So I did not take, and I'm assuming that, you know, with that kind of lot, you don't have a lot of space for a simple family, even a single spaced garage. Right. Because where are you going to put it? Let's maybe. Maybe on the quarter.
A lot of units like this, though, they're driving, when you're in a small lot, they're driving.
Yeah.
With a storage area and a stairway.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, I'm not a builder, so I don't know how to configure.
I mean, condos in the townhouse.
In your doorway, you steps into your house, it's going to stick out somewhere, so.
Although if you've got a thirty by eighty buildable area.
Right.
That's, that's large, you could put a garage.
You put the garage in the front.
Yeah.
You drive it, so. There's, there's no lot of space there. Yep. But it was just something I did up to give myself and the rest of you. So a visual of what's. What is being proposed, what it would actually look like on paper, when someone could come in and say, this is what I'm doing.
Yeah, great, yes.
Uh, and like Linda was saying. There's nothing in here. About multi-family, you have requiring multi-family units. So that has to be from the RFP. Right, right, so if this passes that zoning and the select board don't like the RFPs that they gets. And decide to sell the property anyways, then what do we do?
We see what. The buyer proposes, I mean, if he wants.
I mean, but if they just sell, if they just sell the lot is, just we're selling the lot, right?
I think you have to make the assumption that no one has proposed to just sell the lot and that you. As taxpayers and residents of Enfield can go to all three select board members and tell each of us, and I would suggest that you tell each of us individually. I hear you, but it's always good for you to tell everybody individually that you feel that this needs to be multi-family and that you feel the RFPs deserve them. And I think everybody will be very receptive to hearing what you have to say because that's our job to listen to. And I think we would be absolutely foolish to just sell a lot for the sake of making a couple bucks.
I mean, I, I agree with you saying, it's just been my experience.
Well, I'm going to be very, very loud.
Just past experience has not been the case.
I mean, I'm one of the people who's pushed very, very hard to sell this. I wanted it cleaned out, I wanted to not spend another dime on it. And I want it sold based on the fact that it has no future talents.
I, I think we have to put some trust in, in what Kate is saying. And, you know, I'm sure there will be public hearings regarding this. And if it looks like it's going south and they're just going to sell it. Without any RFPs, then I think. You know, the public hearing process would. Put the select board on notice that the public and the planning board. Think this is not the way to do it.
What do you see as the best use for this? What would you envision as something, a really good use and special use for this?
So I never envisioned one thing, I'm like a big ideas person, so I can think of a zillion different uses that would fit here. You know, everything from agent place housing that has multiple, I, I would like to see something that is a mix of some kind of service. To whatever type of housing unit, so it might be that you have a snack bar, it might be you have a daycare, it might be that you have. An in-house physical therapy room or gym, you know, again, I see like really big ideas and I think people who do these kind of projects are big idea people. Maybe it's a room that is kind of like a maker space and you're encouraging an arts community. I think I, what I really want to see is it developed into something that is. An affordable entry point to join Enfield, so. Either we're going to keep people here and make it so they can live here and maybe vacate a very large home. Because we don't want to just force our aging citizens out, right? Or maybe we're inviting new young professionals or potential future families, because people who rent here. And like it often try to stay nearby here if they can, so I see it as either an entry point or a way to keep people to stay. Uh, and I don't have a big vision of what it looks like, you know, I mean, I can draw you a million drawings because I love to. I grew up buying and selling homes to my family, so this isn't, you know, it's not, everything has like multiple, you know, you could have a cute little book shop or a cafe here. So I think there's all these pieces where you could have a little niche piece that makes it a unique dwelling space. That attracts people while still making sure you're providing something up, and I really, I particularly want to see. Some more sidewalk that joins to town, that is something that I feel very strongly about, because I think this needs, and I. I would like to see electric vehicle charging stations. You know, I'm going to start this, but I think, you know, there's something in like some, in a solar array, right? This is my personal, because I think some, some modern energy efficiency, but you have to see what people propose for design, I don't think you. Can hold anybody to those criteria, like, and say you can only build that zero, but certainly, I would love to see it absolutely. Right, like, you know, and wire that place up for a high speed.
I like the idea of whatever it is having. Concept room that supports it. The daycare or the.
They're very popular in the city, right, I mean, I, so I lived in the city and almost everywhere I've lived has had some kind of concept space. And it really does. Yeah, a gym or a little mini mart or cafe or, you know, and there's all these kinds of things that. I mean, and maybe you get it, maybe you don't, maybe it's a lending library that lends plots and hats, who knows, I mean, there's a million or a kayak or a bike ride.
Home is that's, getting back to my problem is, that's what you want, it's a matter of who buys it and what they want to build.
Right, and I'm saying, she asked for my opinion.
Yeah.
So I gave my opinion and I'm not saying that's.
I understand that, I just.
It's, like I said, I'm a big idea person, so I'm very open to other people's big ideas. That doesn't mean every big idea is a good idea or feasible, so.
Um, where, where is the select board with the proposal, because we haven't.
I just emailed to see, Jack has, Jack is doing our recruitment as well as working for the town. So, um, he obviously has multiple hats, I just emailed NICC Rob to get us a copy of his draft.
Is that going to be? Sent out prior to town meeting or after?
I just sent an email asking Jack to send.
I was wondering what the select board's timeline was, I guess is my question.
Everything in my life is yesterday. So I can't answer that because I like to have everything done like.
Yeah.
Um, I, my understanding was there was a draft and I don't see why we can't, we couldn't have it circulated properly.
Yep. I think, I think one of the big wild parts still though is the, is the. Brownfields, there's, there's still a little bit of work to be done there, we've, we've gone through the site. Uh, level one and the level two. They've made recommendations, there's still some work to be done, we've got a, the buildings themselves are going to have to be raised.
Yeah.
There's asbestos and lead inside of them.
Well, there was a discussion on whether we did it and including the cost or whether we sold it as is and discounted it to.
But following the Lebanon model, they're the ones that cleaned it up. Because usually the developer has, they want the clean bill of health, they don't want.
No, and that's fine, I think that was just the question that was raised.
And in Lebanon, I just talked to Sean Mulholland today, they're still digging up the hydraulic oil spill that must have happened fifty years ago there.
Ours, ours was a pretty basic set of findings, so it sounded like they were, like they were much better.
Yes.
Than what I expected, we have some asbestos, which everybody knows appears everywhere on buildings that, so. Um, and that is much better than finding some mysterious asbestos. Because I, I'm not going to lie, I was a little bit afraid. You have to do it, you have to do your diligence, but it's not ever, you go like this.
Anywhere the railroad was, if they were there, it's usually a huge mess.
I know, it's one of the reasons why I'm not in love with the idea of only depot streets.
I, I think the question that needs to be asked, and I would assume that Jack has, is on top of it. Is. Is federal or state funding available for the cleanup? And if so, does it flow to the town or does it flow to the property owner? And that might influence your decision.
I think one of the issues we're facing as a board is that we have a town manager who is part time. So they are running operations and this is one of the dangers of having a long term. What's now turned into a long term position that's part time, is that some of those, and I don't know who has time on their plate. But I think it's been a challenge for us to keep our eye on the operations ball and not take a lot of side trips that are. Like, I would prioritize this, but not everybody necessarily wants to agree with me. I think we take some side trips on some other projects that maybe are, in my opinion, lower priority. But, you know, it's not, it's very hard to get that done, if we. Are hopefully hiring somebody, right? Then that would be a full-time job and we, I think, would open up a little bit more doors of opportunity, but there's a lot of funding. Elisa has been going through those presentations on some of the funding and following it pretty closely, so. She actually, I don't know if you want to check in with Elisa and see if she spotted anything, because we could place that on. A fast track to do list for our new person. I mean, and, and when we, when Jack came on, we had kind of like what's pending and what to do and some priorities and we'll do the same thing.
And I think the reality is too, right?
I will.
The work that you're doing here has now put it to mid March town meeting.
Right.
Before the zoning change, if that's, if that's what happens, if the town supports that. That's obviously going to have a big impact on what happens next, you know, the town says, uh, that maybe. We, we take that as a hint, but.
Yeah.
I'm hoping the town's like, yeah, this is a great idea, let's go, do it, and then. Maybe that starts a little snowball momentum with the new town manager on, on staff and it's fired up energy, I think it's definitely possible.
Anything else on Village Residential? Anything else on proposed zoning changes?
Any petitions come in? Nothing that I've received, I do have my handy dandy. Traditional town meeting calendar from the NHMA. Yeah, well, I've got a copy and I looked at that, I believe today was the last day for zoning change. September eighth is the last day to accept petitions to amend the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
Well.
Nothing came in on your.
Nobody's here.
We have enough on our plate.
Yeah, we do.
And I think you guys have done a really good job tackling some big questions.
So Thursday, January sixth is the last day to post and publish. Notice for the first hearing on proposed adoption and amendment of zoning ordinance. So. But we should have our first meeting in January be public hearing. Yeah. So that would be.
Wait, if, if the sixth is the last day to post it, does that give us enough time for?
No, that's last day to post, not the first day. Right, it's us to post.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's, yeah, post it after that date.
Right, okay.
Post it.
So we can post it, you know.
January second or for the second. The second Wednesday. Certainly, we don't have a meeting. We don't have the Christmas week meeting.
Right, yeah. And that also gives you time to have your second public hearing.
We do send the drafts. Of these to Jack to circulate to the select board so that they. Because it's lengthy and so I want them to familiarize themselves ahead of time. And also the expectation that they read that.
Rob, you're going to do a little narrative.
I know it's not funny.
Yes. Yes.
It's not funny, but.
I, I can't hear what Rob is saying when you guys are talking.
So I will work up the narrative. Yes.
Okay.
Would you, I'm going to probably work up the narrative and send it along to the select.
That was going to be my suggestion, don't, don't just send it to them without.
Yeah.
A cover letter.
Pack it up a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
We format it, it's, it needs some formatting.
Um, anybody on Zoom wish to make any comments? David or Celia? Wilson's here.
Sharon.
Okay. Phil's here, hi Phil.
He's been here a long time.
Okay.
Hello. I'm here.
He's been very small on the screen and I haven't paid attention to it. Now Sharon. You had some comments? You're muted, Sharon. Sharon, you came out.
Sorry, here I am. Here I am. Um, maybe it's my unfamiliarity with the process. Um, I've. Depended on the zoning, you know, the planning board. And zoning amendments and to. To guide what happens in town. And I think what I could see happening in Enfield, if things are too open-ended. Um, it happened with Jake's. Um, came in, you know, kind of. We were butters, we were very involved in the process, but basically what happened was, well, they're all within the zoning regulations, so they can do whatever they want. So I'm concerned, number one, that it, it, you're saying that. It's five units or more that have to go for site planning review, I would rather it be four units or more. Um, I just think that, who, I think that Kate's idea of, oh, a craft space and. Community and all of that is going to be wonderful, but the reality is somebody's going to come in and develop these units. To the letter of the law and probably ask for variances on top of that. Because they're going to want to get, as Kate said, oh, well, we can't. I think Kate, you were the one who said, well, we can't have four units because that could get too expensive for the developer.
No, that's not what I said and it's not how I said it.
I misunderstood.
For four units is because it doesn't require a site plan review under our current regulations. And so when you go to five or six, you need to do the site plan review, you probably need some help that will be costly. And you have to pay to operate as the owner of the units, and so that is why often people stop at four.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I do appreciate that. Um, I guess what I really would hate to see across, we're not talking specifically about the development. Um, proposed development across from Georgia's right now, um, or any future development, but I would hate to see cookie cutter boxes come in. That, you know, people utilize every square inch to fit as many units as they can, and it's not nice. People like don't have patios to sit outside or porches, they just have a door into a building. And the building looks like a block, that is not going to really appeal, it's not going to add to any quality in Enfield. So I guess I'm just cautioning you. Um, that as we go forward with this, to be prudent about what you can do and what these regulations can do to. Um. Even though people need apartments, people need nice apartments. And our community needs nice buildings that we're going to be proud of, Anne's place is a, a, a development that is nice. Um, so, I'm not sure. Anything I'm saying can be specifically adhered to, but it's a concept. Of what it's like to live in this community and what people see when they come into this community that we're going to live with for a very long time. Um, and my last comment, I think Kurt, did you say that parking spaces can be on setback? On portions of the land that's, that's supposed to be setback?
Yeah, yeah, my understanding, and Rob can correct me, is the setback stuff is structures only. Now, a parking lot for a commercial is considered a structure, but someone with a gravelled and individual driveway. Uh, a parking space for the resident. It's not considered a structure, so it could be within the setback area. So you could park your car within twenty feet of the roads and call it, and that's where you parked your car. But you couldn't put your shed down. But you couldn't put your shed though within twenty feet of the road.
Uh huh, okay.
Within that twenty feet.
And we see that all the time downtown, a lot of the parking in places is right there.
Well, I, I think that's the whole problem with downtown Enfield, truthfully, is there was never. Real about how, what was gonna happen with a lack of parking and how crowded things were going to be. And, you know, that's unfortunate because there really isn't any good place for people to park. And even if somebody parks, you know, has the apartment building, proposed apartment building across from Georgia's. I know in regulations that in theory you only need to have a guest space for every four units. So that means that two of the eight units or, or. One or two of the units are gonna be able to have a friend visit, a visiting nurse visit. Um, a physical therapist visit, there will be no parking otherwise for anybody who visits those buildings. And if you're gonna have people who may need services. There again, that's the consideration for downtown Enfield and the lack of parking. So those are just some ideas that I have, I, I support you guys with your work and thank you for just listening to my comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Phil, do you have anything to add, since I wasn't aware that you were here?
No, I'm, I'm just listening intently here, I, I'm. I'm, I'm all for trying to get us, get affordable housing and if you make it too fancy, you're not gonna have affordable housing. You have to, you have to have a compromise there someplace, and the other thing is. Charging stations for electric cars, if that's the direction we're gonna go, we need to start looking at areas in town that. Don't have anything built on them right now, but have a nice south slope so we could put in a few more solar arrays. To generate some more power here in town. That's my only comment today.
Okay, thanks Phil. All right, so we're done with. Zoning amendments and changes, master plan task force, the community-wide survey has been. Online for probably, what, three weeks now? And as of Monday, there were roughly a hundred and thirty odd responses. No, three hundred and ten, I'm sorry. And that does not include people who responded on paper. It might be another, what, ten, twenty, thirty, I don't, I don't know the exact number, so. We're probably close the survey out with, I'm guessing about three fifty. Which is.
That's good.
Pretty reasonable.
That's twice what you just got meeting.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Look at it that way, yeah.
So, um, that's basically what the master planning task force has been doing. Or not been doing. Our previous meeting was the week of, well, the week we had our last meeting. And then we have not met. And we will not meet until the second Monday. In December, which is essentially a week, week and a half of that.
Next week.
Next week, next week, okay. So basically, the only thing to report is the survey is out, we've got a pretty good response level. Oh, I know what, Rob, do you have the vision statement draft easily available?
I don't.
You don't?
It was nice, I saw it.
Did you see it?
Of course I did.
How did you get to see it?
Oh, come on.
She's the wizard of all, she's.
I should not have. Anyhow, the vision, the visionee committee did come up with a really succinct. Visionee statement, which I'm sure will be expanded, but I wish, I wish we had it shown. We'll have it at the next meeting.
It actually, I did just send out the. The economic development chap, chapter, she's the. Contractor that we hired has already pumped out the first chapter that we sent a, a version around to the. To the task force for their early review, I think that'll be coming out at the meeting.
Okay, good.
We're gonna basically, for each month, right, we're working on a different chapter, actually for each meeting.
For each, each meeting, we are gonna be working on first draft of a different chapter, so that's five meetings. And the idea is to have a good solid first draft in March, February or March. It takes longer, it takes longer, we wanna do quality, not meet a calendar deadline. And we will also be organizing some focus groups to discuss specific chapters. Which I think will give us a, some good feedback from the public once we get some chapters. Actually written, and, you know, I can't imagine that happening until after the first of the year. So that's basically all there is to report on master planning. Our next meeting is the twenty-second, our hour meeting, this group, planning board. Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up?
Have we got anything for the forty-second?
Yeah, that's what.
I thought we were. There are no applications?
No applications. Holiday break?
Holiday break, yeah.
Yeah, so next meeting will be the second, second Monday in January.
Yep.
Which is.
Not Monday.
Second day.
I, I'm sorry, I, I have too many evening meetings, so, second. The twelfth.
Well, and then will be our hearing.
And. Yeah, we'll have. Ballots, the warrants as we prepare. The zoning warrants as they would appear on the ballot and you're going, we're going to include commentary. Right on the air notes or?
Well, I think we should.
Yeah, we can. Just so someone answers, so there won't be so many redundant questions.
Yeah.
From the audience.
Yeah, yeah.
David, I neglected one item for the select board report, which, not to beat the proverbial dead horse, but. We did discuss masking a bit and the higher rates of COVID, so I just wanted to call everyone's attention to that and that. The select board is obviously expressed interest and, and talked about reminding folks about the resolution. The fact that we ask everybody to wear masks in the town offices to be vigilant, to not go out if you're sick. Meetings if you are sick or if you're somebody who has COVID or COVID-like symptoms, so just that whole mindfulness that I know you guys all know. The one offer I made that I, to them that I wanna make to this team is that if you have not had your booster. There are some available slots on Saturday and I can give you the email address and information and where to take those. So if you have somebody in your circle that you want, we were given some extended hours in town to do that and so let me know and I will give you that permission. And it's totally up to you, no pressure, but I'm going.
I'm getting mine tomorrow. Your booster?
Oh, yeah. I got it taped to.
Because as soon as I did it, I got online.
I was able to get into Walgreen.
I get so frustrated, I couldn't get in anywhere that I drove to West Lebanon and went pharmacy to pharmacy and they wouldn't talk to.
They wouldn't talk to you.
No. Yeah, you've gotta make it a point.
My, my child, I had to take her to Clement for the first one, I couldn't book a follow-up at Clement, but they didn't leave without follow-ups. So I had to book her into contract for the second one, which works out, when your kid screams so bad, you never wanna go back to the same place.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Okay, maybe second it all in favor, I pose, we're adjourned at. Eight thirty-three.
She tells the lady not to cook poorly and to just give her the shock, and spent like freaking minutes. And at one point I finally gave up and I let the kid go and she bolts for the tour. And I drive her back in and she's screaming, the lady's like, it's gonna hurt more if you keep struggling with the kids, like throwing elbows. I was, I was like, I will buy you makeup if you do that stuff, like I ended up buying her so many things. We let her skip the rest of the day of school and took her to the premium outlets.